Good afternoon, this is the Thurston County Board of County Commissioners conducting a public hearing for September 18th, 2018. I'd like to do some introductions first. Commissioner Bud Blake, Chair of the Board this year. To my left is Commissioner Gary Edwards, to my right is Commissioner John Hutchins, his right is Labadina Bomar, Clerk of the Board, her right is Martin Casey, Acting County Manager, and to his right is Andrew Defobis, staff member, who's going to give us a briefing on the background on this. So, the proposed application, today we're going to hear the topic of a proposed application to consider for the inclusion of Board Management Open Space Tax Program, Chapter 84.34 RCW. The purpose of this hearing is to accept public testimony for an application that the staff will be describing for the inclusion of the open space tax program. So I have one sign in sheet right here, there's others in the back, as people make their way in and they want to sign in, I'll grab those sheets for it and we'll go in that process, but I want to make sure everybody knows that there is a sign in sheet for your ability to sign in. But when you come to the podium, I ask you, there's three minutes per person, you cannot donate the time. State your first name and last name and generally where you live in the county. We'll have a three-minute clock up here on the right, and when it counts down, you'll hear the buzzer sound, it sounds like a kind of microwave sound. Be polite and what have you, if you're midstream of thought, I'll ask you to kind of start wrapping it up in your thought, but we want you to finish your thought, that's what it's about, but know that we're not going to the four-minute level or anything like that. So with that in mind, I'm going to ask Andrew Defobis to come to the podium to give us the background, and then I'll open it up for the public to come forward to the podium.
Do you want me to advance the slides for you?
I've got this, this hopefully will-
Wherever you want, Andrew, if you're comfortable, sure, sure. Just podium driven, that's all I hope.
Well, thank you, Commissioner Blake and the Board, and hello, I'm Andrew Defobis with Community Planning and Economic Development. So I'm here to provide a brief overview of the open space tax program and this year's application for the public hearing. So the open space tax program is an incentive program to keep land in an open space state. There are programs that are operated by both the Board of County Commissioners and the Assessors Office. The Assessors Office oversees designated forest land and farm and agricultural open space, thank you Josh. The Board oversees a timberland program and then a broader open space program, which is what we're here to talk about tonight. So RCW 8434 is the state law that gives the Board of County Commissioners the authority to review and approve open space applications. And again, the Board oversees agricultural conservation and then other significant open space. And that can include wetlands, significant wildlife habitat areas, recreation areas, archaeological resources, and things of that nature. So applicants have to meet the criteria outlined in that RCW 8434, and also the county's open space tax program procedures, which are adopted by resolution most recently in 2004. So the way it works is that there's a public benefit rating system, the property tax reduction results because land is assessed at a percentage of its market value based on resources that may be on the property. So, some of those things that I mentioned, the agricultural conversion or recreation, wildlife habitat, all of those things are worth a certain amount of points under the public benefit rating system, and the total of those points then translates to a reduction in tax. And properties that feature public access or permanent conservation easements are also awarded points. So this year, there has been no audit from the Assessors Office, which typically brings a bunch of applications into the Board's purview. This year, there's only the one application, which is from the Lake Moore Community Club, and the proposal in front of the Board tonight is to switch the current open space approval within that open space classification, that broad open, open category. The proposal is to switch from one resource to another. So currently, the property is enrolled as urban growth area open space with limited access due to resource sensitivity, and I'll talk about the other categories that are under consideration in a little while. So here is the property in question, you can see on the right, the little pin in the map there in West Olympia shows where the property is located in general, and on the left there is a blown-up portion of that. So the property is about 22 acres, it's fully forested, located out at Ken Lake, and it's adjacent to the Lake Moore community. It's zoned RLI 2 to 4, surrounded by a mixed zoning. And the proposed open space categories in the application are private recreation area, urban growth area, open space, public lands buffer, and with points for public access as well. So I'll flip through some photographs of the property, just let me know if you need to slow down or anything. Okay, so the community, the community club would like to install a recreational trail on the property. Based on the current open space approval, that would not be allowed because of the limited access. So they are proposing to switch categories within that open space program to allow for more public access on the site. And they also wish to maintain the property in a clean state, as you saw from one of the photographs there, there have been issues with debris and dumping, and they wish to be able to take care of that, continue to take care of that. And so the scope of the review here for the Board is whether the property would qualify for current use classification in that open space program if recreational use were established on the site. To date, we have received a number of public comments, as of today, 86 comments from 36 unique individuals. Of those, 30 of those individuals were in support of the application, five were not in support of it, and one was just neutral information from the City of Olympia regarding permitting. Currently, the trail that the club proposes does not require any county land use permit or approval. Essentially, it's proposed to only be open for the members of the community, they're proposing to avoid any critical areas and minimize the width of a trail in any of the critical area buffers, and based on our analysis, those factors lead to that use not requiring county approval itself. So of those four categories that the club has applied for, the first is that private recreation area, and the staff recommendation is that it does appear to qualify for those points. That is a category devoted to recreational activities, and it would be utilized by a select group of individuals for recreational purposes. And in addition to that, they have applied for a point for public access or the partial access, and it would appear to qualify for that as well, because again, it will be utilized by certain members of the public for recreational access, and our rules just stipulate that if a user group is able to use it, private or public, you know, then that can potentially be, can potentially qualify. So the other two categories, it does not appear to qualify for points. The first was the urban growth area open space. That category requires access to be granted to certain outside groups such as educational groups or nonprofit groups, and the applicants have indicated they don't wish to provide that level of access. And the last category, the public lands buffer, would, you know, on its face would seem like it might qualify because this parcel abuts Highway 101, which is publicly owned, but in order to receive points for that, the public land that a site buffers needs to be more like a park or natural area preserve, things of that nature, that's how the criteria are written. So, in the summary of the public benefit rating system analysis for this application, if it were to be classified as a private recreational area with public access, that would provide a 50% reduction in market value on the land based on the total of those points. And so going forward, any taxes that are not paid by an applicant are paid by other members of the tax code area, that's how all open space applications work. However, going forward, if this application were approved, there's a smaller tax shift to those other parties because the applicants would be paying a higher share of their own property taxes. They currently have a 70% reduction based on what they're in, it would be a 50% reduction going forward. So the Planning Commission held a public hearing on June 6th, and they recommended approval of the application with the condition that the trail be established or the recreational use be established within one year. And the current staff recommendation would be to approve classification of the 21.6 acres for private recreation area and partial access, which would result in four points under the public benefit rating system, a 50% tax reduction. And staff would also recommend that that approval be conditioned to coincide with lawful complete trail construction so that the points are awarded to a use that's on the ground. So the next steps are for the Board to hold its public hearing, and then ultimately make a decision on the application. Notice of this hearing was published in the Olympian on August 9th, it was also mailed to all property owners within 300 feet of the parcel, and staff also provided an email notice to anyone who had submitted written comments, that was done in early August and then again in early September. And there is a briefing scheduled for next September, or sorry, next Wednesday, September 26th at 9:30 in the morning, should additional conversation be needed at the close of the hearing. That concludes my remarks, are there any questions from the Board?
All right, we do have questions.
Andrew, could you qualify, you said notice was mailed to folks that live within 300 feet of the property, along with all of the community property owners?
It was not sent to all community property members, the statute is for 300 feet in the urban growth area, and so that was what was done.
Do you have any idea about how many got the notice and how many did not? Do you have any rough idea?
I'd have to go back and look, but I do, we do have a list of all the, all the landowners who received that.
Okay, and then-
And I do believe, sorry-
Oh, go ahead.
The applicant indicated that if we were to, if we made them aware of the steps in the process, that they would send those things out to their community members in their, with their avenues.
Can you hold it down, let the staff and the Commissioner have a discussion?
And we'll get to those issues shortly. I'm a little bit confused on the public access versus private access, I've heard those terms. It's not going to be open to the general public, right? Just the members of this particular community?
That's correct, that's my understanding, yes.
Okay.
The Planning Commission recommended approval, they also recommended, and they use the word "recommended," or at least in the staff report, recommended that the trail be built within a year. Is that just a recommendation, or can they require that?
I don't think it can be required, the thought there is that the, it's sort of a catch-22 situation where the current, the current open space approval does not allow for that level of recreational access, and so the applicants have not wanted to open that trail and therefore breach that open space tax agreement. So the thought was to have, if it's the pleasure of the Board to approve that application, have it done so that it's conditioned that they do construct that within a certain amount of time, because we don't want to have the approval done when the resource isn't necessarily on the ground. So the workaround may be, should the Board choose to approve the application, to not have all the documents signed until the applicants have demonstrated that that use is actually there on the property.
Is this unique enough that it's rare, or is it common?
This is a very rare circumstance, yeah, this is a very unique open space application.
Okay, and does, are there time constraints attached to this application?
There are no, none-
If we wait, if we wait a certain weeks or months or whatever, that-
There aren't that I'm aware of, but the application has been in since September of last year, so I know they're anxious to hear what the county has to say, but there's no specific timeframe that I'm aware of.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, Andrew? Okay, so we're going to go into the public hearing portion of the program here, so first I have Mr. Glenn Morgan, I don't see him, but he's there, okay, sure. So the next person I have is Sean Coombs, Sean? Go ahead, sir, you have the floor.
My name is Sean Coombs, and I had the great privilege of living in Ken Lake with my family since 2001. I'd like to share the bottom line upfront about this application you now consider. The Ken Lake Board is simply asking to approve this open space application, which will allow Ken Lake homeowners access to their own land via a trail for the purposes of supervision and recreation. This trail has already been installed and is ready to be enjoyed pending your decision. Tonight, the key question before you is whether you agree that the open space application complies with the intentions and statutes of the open space program as was suggested in the Thurston County Planning Staff Report, and the Thurston County Planning Commission's unanimous approval recommendation. I would like to emphasize that our 22-acre urban forest parcel is collectively, is a collectively owned common area like all the parks in Ken Lake. However, unlike all of our other common areas, our membership has been locked out of this land for nearly a quarter century due to the needlessly restrictive nature of the current open space agreement, which allows access only for scientific research. I know that pragmatic land use is an important focus of your tenure, so I believe you would agree that preventing landowners from accessing their own land is virtually never a good policy. Approving this application will unlock this land for recreation and supervision by Ken Lake landowners, will result in our community paying a modest tax increase, will enhance our ability to discourage homeless camp re-establishment, and finally will allow us to be better stewards of our urban forest. Our community has been discussing this proposal for well over three years, and our open space application has been very slowly moving through the county process for 14 months. I urge you to agree with the planning staff and the Planning Commission and approve this application without further delay. Your approval will allow our members to enjoy and care for our land. The other thing that I will bring up that I hadn't mentioned in the document that it provided, is when this land was purchased in 1987, and you have a copy of the ballot, recreational use is one of the justifications used to convince the membership to buy the land. And then in 1995, with a Board only vote, they didn't ask the community at all, they took that away when they filed this application. So the community has voted, they voted when we purchased the land in 1987. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your words there. Next I have on this, Rob Pennowitz, and then after that, Mark Mahaffey. Hello, sir.
Gentlemen, thank you for hearing this issue. You know, as a businessman, I feel this is a waste of your time. There are many, many more important issues for y'all to be spending your time than a issue as to whether a landowner can access their own land. The application that's been submitted has followed due process, been going on for over a year, it's gone through the Planning Commission, they voted yes, now it's before the Commission. The majority of our community and Board are in favor of this change, the benefits far outweighing the costs. That being said, seems that this should be a non-issue for the Commissioners. While some have tried to bring political influence to bear on this issue, we all know in our hearts what the right thing to do is, for the Ken Lake community and for the county. I know that each of you will take into consideration all the facts, and will vote according to your hearts and your conscience, because each of you knows what the right thing to do is. I'm sorry that this is taking so much of your time, I've been, observed many Commission meetings, and I know you've got many things that are much more important than this issue, but I appreciate the fact that you are taking and doing due diligence in this matter. Thank you.
Thank you, sir, for your words. So now, next is Mark Mahaffey, and then after that is J.D. Anderson.
Okay, thanks for the opportunity to speak. I am Mark Mahaffey, I live at 2111 Lake Moore Drive. Approval of the open space tax program application will enable Ken Lake residents to enjoy and benefit from the educational and recreational opportunities that the parcel affords, and will enable Ken Lake residents to better land, to be better land stewards and actively manage the parcel as an urban forest. Please approve the application, thank you very much.
Thank you for your words, sir. So, J.D. Anderson, and after that Christina Morris.
Yeah, my name is JP Anderson.
JP, sorry.
I live in Ken Lake. I'm our Board President this year, and I was on the Board last year. I just want to remind everyone that this did follow our due process, it was an issue that we discussed in several Board meetings before the application was made, and something that the Board has not voted to overturn or turn back from since that time. And so, although it's not popular with everyone, especially everyone here tonight, I think it's important to understand, we do have a thriving democracy in Ken Lake, for better for worse, we've got an engaged group of people on both sides of almost every issue. And, you know, when we look at those pictures and we think about our community and how it's changing, I think it's important for us, if this conversation is to you, but it's kind of also for us a little bit here, at least from my perspective. You know, our, our community is changing dramatically around us, and kind of the, the way it looked and the way it feels is going to naturally change with that. We've had two logging projects that have started adjacent to this property since we filed our petition, and we have a lot of things in our covenants that protect the trees inside the neighborhood, but this really offers a chance for people that live in Ken Lake, and for children that grow up in Ken Lake, like my three sons, to experience going through the trees and having a space-
Yes, speak to the Board, not to the audience.
You got it. So I think that the decision for you guys is really clear. It was unanimously recommended by your appointed Planning Commission, it's recommended tonight by your staff, I appreciate you guys having this opportunity for us to have this meeting late in the day where we can all attend, I know you've had a long day. So if there's any reason why this shouldn't go forward, it has not been articulated at any meeting, any email, any discussion I've been in, and I look forward to hearing your votes soon, thank you.
Thank you, sir. So Christina Morris?
I prefer to speak later.
Later, okay. So Marion Bailey, and then after that Todd Newley, Newlin.
Hello, gentlemen.
Can you pull the mic down just a tad? There you go.
Is that better?
Sure, sure, sure.
Okay, my name is Marion Bailey, I live at 2111 Lake Moore Drive, once again, part of this group. I just want to say upfront that I really support this open space application to rezon this 22-acre parcel of forest. I believe the revision would be good for the Lake Moore neighborhood and result in much better forest stewardship. By profession, I'm a wildlife biologist, I have a master's degree, and I've been, well I've got more than 25 years of experience in working in plant communities and especially in the Pacific Northwest forests. I have professional experience also in assessing potential impacts and effects of human actions on wildlife and wildlife habitat. And in my professional opinion, I do not believe that allowing recreation in the form of dirt trail in the upland portion of this parcel, not in the wetlands, would not cause negative impacts, that's a double negative, it would not cause impacts to the seasonal wetlands or to the rest of the site. I'd also like to say that our community is changing, there are a lot of younger families moving into our community that really strive to get their kids out and have a communication with nature, and as you can see, as we sit here, there's a lot of gray hairs, including myself, but I just want to bring up that the community is changing, and young people, the younger families are demanding this, they just can't be here. Also, I want to say that based on the current value of the land, by my evaluation, the additional taxes would, annually would be about a dollar per household, based on the current assessment of the land. And I personally am more than ready to pay a nominal fee such as that to be able to access this land. In other words, we're taking on more of a tax burden, and I'm thrilled to do that. Rezoning this parcel will allow us as landowners to access it, monitor it, and manage this forest, that is a concern of mine as a biologist, these actions have been stymied by the former, by the current zoning. So, in closing, I really urge you to rezone this, this parcel, so that the neighborhood residents can access it and we can manage it effectively. Thank you.
Thank you. So Todd, is it Newley?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, and then after that, Gail Dom.
All right, thank you, everyone, I'm Todd Newley, and I live in the Ken Lake neighborhood, and I think for me, I've got two points, and I've just immediately forgotten the second one, but the first one is the tax rate on the parcel and the fact that taxes are going to go up, and I think the neighborhood, we've not had a chance to vote on changing the classification of the parcel as a neighborhood. And because it's going to impact the dues that we pay in each and every household, I think that we ought to be able to follow a process where we each get to have a say in that, whether we want to do that or not. And the second thing, if I just sit here for like five seconds- It's not going to come to me, but it's, it's the due process in voting, voting on the, on the classification, oh, yes it was, but the, the public access point, I think we need to look at that just a little bit more. My concern is the public access point, it's going to be a public access for anybody in the state of Washington, and not the community, I don't know that that's put very clearly in the documentation in the RCW, that is one of my, my points of question, one of my more bigger questions on that, my terrible grammar. Okay, all right, thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Todd. So I have Gail Dom.
I might speak a little bit later.
Okay, Rita Westling, and then after that Jeff Swatek.
I would suggest to deny the application for the open space category until the LCC Board has the chance to communicate to all community members in a transparent way and to demonstrate it in a legal manner. Too many backdoor politics have been demonstrated in this whole process. The application was notarized before officially approved at the LCC Board meeting. Clear rules and standards were developed for the trail, they have never been published or shared. Security has never been addressed. No one approached the neighbors boarding the 22 acres to have their concerns heard. This trail will bring unwanted visitors, presenting a high-risk security. The trail would be constructed for free, right now that figure is hovering $4,000 or more dollars. Taxes would not be impacted, this statement is not true. No one knows what the figure will be since the land would have to be reassessed, which would change the tax on the open space, and it goes from 70%, 70% to 50%. The elders of the community each paid for the land with the understanding that it would remain an open space and not change. Perhaps the elders should be refunded, the category if it's changed. Ken Lake has changed in the past few years, we are, as a community, have to watch out for our neighbors. It is a see something, say something time. We need to concentrate on safety, keep a watchful eye, and be respectful of our neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Rita. So next I have Jeff Swatek, and after that Gilbert Aldrich. Oh, Gilbert, I didn't know if you want to do it or not, so let me know.
Good evening, my name is Jeff Swatek, I live at 1605 Camden Circle Southwest in Ken Lake. I purchased my property after careful consideration of the amenities, and more importantly, the foresight that safeguarded the natural resources and provided a unique urban environment with ample recreational opportunities. I appreciate this opportunity to share with you my perspective on the proposed application to change the open space category. From first glance, the proposal might appear to make sense, however, when, when you look at the facts, the decision not to approve this application is quite obvious and compelling, and that is why I oppose this change in the open space category. First off, safety and security, the parcel's physical location near Highway 101 and the City of Olympia's busiest interchange with known issues with transience and criminal activity. I both live and work in this area and deal with the many safety and security challenges, and know these firsthand, as, as that is one of my responsibilities at work. Ken Lake is experiencing an increase in crime with drug and crimes of opportunity that have not been effectively controlled in our neighborhood. These crimes are occurring out in the open, in our neighborhood, whereas the proposed change in the open space category would provide public access to a parcel that we cannot monitor with ease and regularity, and provides an unsafe environment for residents and children in our community. There has not been any security assessment of the property nor plans to address the deficiencies to provide for public safety. Public safety should be our highest priority and our number one responsibility. The increase in revenue in, for the county from this proposed change in open space category more than likely will be greatly offset over time with the need for law enforcement assistance by the County Sheriff's Department. These safety concerns and those from homeowners who will be most impacted- These safety concerns and those from homeowners who will be most impacted should not be discountable. Under public process and accountability, our community does, does have a process, but in this case chooses not to follow it. The residents of Ken Lake have not been provided any financial details that will be the result of the change, including the increase in taxes, what the impact will be on individual homeowners' assessments, and, and the budget for needed improvements on the parcel also have not been shared. This proposal was not evaluated for consistency with our covenants and bylaws, but rather it was just submitted without regard. Let me be perfectly clear, this proposal has not been voted on by the residents. This change in open space category is a tax increase on homeowners who have not been given an opportunity to vote on this issue. We have many residents who are seniors and on fixed incomes, as well as residents who struggle financially. My time's up. I'll submit the rest of my comments.
Go ahead. Do you have a thought you're finishing up on?
Okay. There's also some written comments that I wish to submit.
Just give it to Martin then. Thank you, Jeff. So Gilbert, I didn't know if you want to come to the podium or not. You didn't mark yes or no? I take that as a yes? Okay. So after Gilbert, we have Jay Clark.
My name is Gilbert Aldrich. I live at 1720 Camelot Park in Ken Lake. And I guess I would suggest, or it seems to me from what I'm hearing tonight, that the issue isn't so much about the open space and the use of it, but rather the vote of the people in the community, whether they want it or not, and the information that they would need to have regarding not only the tax aspects of it, but the expense of developing it and maintaining it later, including insurance aspects and security aspects. The, the community has not had a chance to get details on it. While there's been earlier testimony about the way they have discussed this for three years, they have discussed it among themselves for three years, and as a closed group, they have in mind what they want to do. The people in the community all contribute to the expense of the operation, and they should all have an opportunity to vote on whether they want to extend this or not. One footnote is that I bought my property in 1989, and I was curious about this assessment. I asked why it was there. The answer that I was given is that it was to prevent the development of strip malls or some other objectionable use. There wasn't anything about extending the parks or other recreation facilities that existed.
Thank you so much, Gilbert. So I have Jay Clark. Is Jay Clark here? Yep. Hi, sir. And then after that, Joe Brassfield. Hello, sir. How are you? Can you lift the mic up just a tad? You bet. Go ahead. You have the floor.
I'm Jay Clark. I live at 2045 Lakemore Drive in Ken Lake. Just to set the record straight, I was the president of the board when this property was bought. We did talk about it had recreational value, but it was the part that was up on Kaiser Road. We never looked at the 16.5 acres, the lowland part of it, as recreational. We employed a, a, a body of people who lived within the community and outside the community, developers, hydrologists, real estate agents, and they studied this property for one year on the direction of the board. And at one year, they came back and they said, what this property needs is a thorough scientific assessment, because they didn't know how it affected the lake. We know that about 80% of the runoff comes over that property and should get into the lake. Now, the board has been remiss over the years in the fact that they did not take care of the lake, and they've allowed these springs to silt over. The runoff coming off of the streets has totally plugged those things. So that's what the board is fighting with right now. We're wrestling with, how do we clean up the lake and make it viable again? So now we're saying we should have another expense back in the woods, and if they disturb that land, like they did in, in the late 70s, early 80s, it cost over $300,000 with the damage, when all of that land flooded and all that silt and stuff entered into the lake and into the subdivision. Our fear is that that will happen again. We don't have the money to do a scientific study. It would be at least three times the, the total budget that the board has, and I don't see that the community would approve that. So I would say we need to leave it as it is until we can figure out exactly what does that land do to recharging the lake, since there is no stream that comes into the lake, and the only water apparently that's coming in right now is when it rains or the runoff off the road, and the road stuff is really polluted from what we're seeing in the lake right now. So I would just say we need to leave it until we can figure out exactly what it does. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you so much, sir. So Joe, you hit no, but did you change your mind? Did you want to come to the podium? No? Okay. And so I'll go on to the next page, and I have, the next person I have is Rick, is it Stennis? I can't make out your penmanship here, sir. Can you say your last name for me, please?
Stence, S-T-E-N-C-E.
Okay, sure.
Good evening. My name is Rick Stence. I live at 2260 Lakemore Drive Southwest in Ken Lake. Throughout the course of these hearings, Mr. Dufobus has periodically reiterated the opinion of legal counsel that internal politics need not be considered when evaluating the merits of the application before you tonight. Consequently, at least for the planning commission, if an application meets public benefit analysis criteria and accumulates the required point total, a recommendation for approval is virtually assured. But I believe the county commissioners have the discretion to look beyond mere formula and employ a more deliberative approach that weighs all aspects of this, of this application. Hopefully then, you will conclude that a much-needed Ken Lake community vote must precede county approval. It is from this perspective that I present the following facts. Number one, the meeting at Hope Community Church in July of 2014, the results of which are presented as evidence of likely majority support, was never promoted nor intended to be an official forum to vote. Only about one-third of the entire community attended, and only one-fourth actually voted. And from a document prepared by trail proponents, I quote, "Unfortunately, there was not enough time for all interested parties to speak, so another meeting may be helpful as the proposal progresses," end quote. No such meeting was ever held. In fact, that meeting, though flawed and inconclusive, has been the only step to solicit the opinions of Ken Lake residents. Number two, the board of trustees at the time appeared to favor reclassification, but based upon the intensity and opposition heard at that same meeting in 2014, decided against further action. Had democracy played out, had there been a full and fair debate, had those adjacent to the property been consulted, and had the community then voted to approve a trail, we would not be here today. We would have accepted the decisions of our neighbors and moved on, but that did not happen. In 2017, the majority on a new board moved to stifle further debate, forego a community vote, and submit, and unilaterally submit this application. You may question why not, you may question why not conduct a vote? Surely there is time to express, there is time to allow our residents to express their wishes on this important matter. By delaying or denying reclassification, we will have time to conduct that vote. Thank you.
You bet. Thank you so much, sir. So next I have Kelly Wood.
Thank you. My name is Kelly Wood. I live at 1713 Camden Park Drive in the Ken Lake neighborhood. Thanks for your time on this. Gentlemen, I am, I am astounded at the level of passion that has developed around this project, which is simply a proposal to let us access property that we as a community own. I am fully in support of this project. We have been talking about it for years. I'm the father of two boys. It is very hard to get them off screens. Having the ability to have them walk through the woods, literally a two-minute walk from my house is invaluable. And let me give you some other reasons to adopt this. We've heard about impacts to the lake. There is no impact to the lake from a passive recreational trail through the woods. It is literally a dirt path through the wood, not unlike thousands of miles of trails in Washington through sensitive areas, including national parks, through wetlands, all sorts of areas. Number two, the cost. Again, it's a dirt path through the woods. My primary hobby is building trails in Capitol Forest. We do that all on a volunteer basis. We have a lot of strong backs in Ken Lake that really want to see this trail back there. We are going to build this thing ourselves and maintain it ourselves. Number three, the homeless camps. The lack of access to this property is what is leading to the safety problem on that property, the junk on that property, the people camping on that property and building campfires on that property. The solution to that problem is to have regular access from people, folks in the neighborhood, walking their dogs, walking with their kids through that land. We do that, the homeless camps go away. Fourth, the majority of this community, as you've heard from the online comments, from the comments I think you'll hear tonight, are in support of this project. The community is changing. There are a lot of younger families like me with kids moving in. We bought into this neighborhood because of the recreational opportunities and the proximity. That is going to make the value of our properties go up, and that's something we should all, all be rooting for in the neighborhood. And finally, on the public process, our documents that govern our neighborhood do not require a public vote to reclassify this property. We vote for a board. That board has approved this project and moved this process forward. Derailing that now is actually more harmful in terms of the due process that is set out in the documents that we bought into and the covenants that bind our property. So in, in closing, please approve this project. It has gone on for too long, and it is time to allow this community to access the land that we own. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your words there, sir. So next I have Wendy Harris, and then after that Chris Song. Hello, Wendy.
Good evening. My name is Wendy Harris. I'm the current vice president of the Lakemore Community Club, and I live at 1728 Camden Place Southwest. I resided there approximately 20 years. The open space application before you was approved by the Lakemore Community Board last year. It is important to emphasize that despite a new board composition this year, there has been no board vote to modify our open space application before you tonight. In other words, the official position of the duly-elected Lakemore Community Club Board of Trustees is to proceed with the open space agreement revision to allow recreational use of our urban forest. As a member of the board, I would like to request that you honor the request of Lakemore Community Club to allow recreational use of our community land. We are simply requesting a change to our open space agreement so that residents may enjoy recreational access to their urban forest. For 20 years, the current open space agreement has effectively prohibited residents to access their own land. Speaking as a longtime member of the community, I feel strongly that our current open space agreement, which restricts access to our urban forest except for scientific research, is not good for our community. We recently spent $2,000 to have a significant homeless encampment, encampment and debris, including drug paraphernalia, removed from that land. If we continue to be restricted from our land, we can expect homeless camp reestablishment. Unmonitored land is prime land for homeless camping. If community members can access that land, the regular presence will deter homeless camps. Some community members have stated that they feel they have not been adequately informed of this proposed change. It is difficult for me, as a three-year board member, to understand why some members feel that way. The board sanctioned the Urban Forest Committee that has been conducting advertised open meetings for over six months to discuss how we better manage our urban forest. The trail proposal has been discussed at most, most board meetings over the last five years. The business of the HOA is conducted at open board meetings and is documented in the minutes as well as a monthly newsletter. If community members are feeling uninformed, it is because they are choosing not to be actively involved in the HOA process. The process has been open and transparent for years. The board has also had a community meeting where both proponents and opponents spoke, and over 100 people attended. An advisory vote was cast at that meeting, with 67 yes votes for a trail on this property and 21 no votes. I would like to emphasize that the approval of this open space application will allow our community to create a beautiful and unique natural amenity. The most successful urban forests are one that are, ones that are enjoyed as they are managed. I urge you to vote in favor of the current open space application to allow private recreational use of our open, of our urban forest. And I'd like to also say that as a board member, I can confirm that the community was notified in multiple places, our newsletter, our minutes, and it's on the reader board out front, that we've been notified.
Thank you so much for your words there. So Chris Song? Did I say your last name correct? Okay, sure. Go ahead, sir.
My name is Chris Song, and I'm a resident of Ken Lake, and I support the reclassification of the 22 acres we own so that our association can actively govern the property. As urban development expands and surrounds this parcel, it is unrealistic to adhere to the current hands-off requirement. As the city of Olympia has a 20-year plan for urban land management, so must our LCC, and we need to reclassify so that we can move forward with the conversation and not dwell on the current conversation then. Two years ago, our board reached consensus and initiated classification of this parcel. In the past nine months, the planning commission reached consensus and recommends reclassification to you. I urge that you reclassify this parcel of land and allow our HOA to move forward as stewards of our own land. Please do not make your decision based on neighborhood politics. You're hearing partial information tonight. You're getting snapshots of perspectives. It can be misleading and distracting from a county-level decision process. Rather, please base your decision based on the merits of the land, advocation from our past and current board members, and the planning commission's recommendation to reclassify the land. Thank you.
Thank you so much, sir. So there's Douglas Bokey, Bokey?
Hold on, not tonight.
Okay, you forget, sure. Okay. And so now I'm going to go back to Gail Dom, and your choice is, you're going to come to the podium? And then after that is Christina Morris.
My name is Gail Dom, and I live at 1823 Lakemore Place in the neighborhood. My husband and I, as seniors, are adamantly against this. I walk three or four times a week, and there's plenty of space and room in Ken Lake for me to walk. I can walk in the parks, I can walk in the circle, and I do that. Ken Lake is becoming, having more and more problems that we shouldn't have. Drug, drug problems, for which I was a victim of one very recently, with an intruder in the house, but I feel that, and for the sake of most, at least the seniors who've been there for years and would like to finish out their lives there, that we should be able to do so in safety. And opening up this land is not something that I think ensures our safety. Thank you.
Thank you so much, ma'am. Can you check to see if there's another listener? And Christina Morris, did you make your, there you go. Come on. How you doing?
I brought the forest with me. My name is Christina Morris. I'm of Ken Lake, and I just feel it's really important to remember what this is all about. This is a little baby western hemlock. I like to visit the forest. I am co-chair of the Urban Forest Committee along with Chris Song, but I speak as an individual tonight. I've lived in the Ken Lake area for 10 years. I'm a retired park service ranger, but I just want to say that I was delighted with the planning commission's unanimous vote to recommend the reclassification. That is a fact. It is also a fact that the trail does exist, and I walk it almost every day. I live about a block from the trail. Now, the trail just happened to be created because our committee decided the best way to get the homeless camp out to get the homeless camp out was to have it physically hand-carried out and not to bring in super-heavy equipment. So our committee decided, gee, let's build a trail. So let there be no doubt, the trail exists, and it's a loop trail, it's out of the wetlands, it's away from private residences. Now, on a personal note, I just want to share, I have a dream. I have a dream to live in a walkable community. My body and mind are not tired, but my soul is. I walk the urban forest, and my soul gets drenched. I need that. My eyes see emerald-green mosses and ferns renewed by our recent rains. My feet were cushioned by soft and spongy forest humus soaked with moisture. I need to walk in the forest, not on asphalt and concrete. My nose needs to smell fresh, clean air filtered by the forest. My ears need to hear birds. My soul needs nature, adventure, freedom, and stillness. I have a dream to share our urban forest with residents. Please approve this application.
Thank you for your words there, ma'am. Okay, so that-
Forward copies of-
Sure, sure. You just get the copy to Martin there for me, please. So that concludes those who've signed in one-on-one. Is there anybody by showhand that would like to come to the podium, and I'll call you forward individually, that wanted to speak or changed their minds? Okay.
Gary.
My name is Simon, but thank you for giving the opportunity. I was sitting here-
Can you just come to the podium, sir? Sorry, I got to get you on record, sir.
My name is Gary Ferko, and I lived in Ken Lake since 1976. I'm a long-term resident there. And I've been listening to this arguments back and forth, and the only thing I could come to, I could see both sides of this story, but I think it's up to the property owners in Ken Lake. There's 265 people, families live in Ken Lake, and they've said they had about 100 people at the meeting, and now only 66 approved to make the motion to do this. I would recommend that the board would allow us to go back to our community through the board, to send out a questionnaire or vote, and so that we can bring our community back together. Right now, if you approve it, our community is going to be not together, just like the politicians today are not together. And I hate to see that, because I've been there so long. So I would like to have, for you to overrule this and give us an opportunity to vote on this by all the members in the community. It's a community function that we have, a board, and through this process, I think we've had three or four different board members, organizations within our board. So it would behoove us to give us an opportunity to do that. Thank you.
And can you state your name again, please? Your last name?
Gary Ferko, F-E-R-K-O.
Okay, thank you. All righty, so just by show of hands, is there anyone else in the audience that would like to come to the board, to the podium, to speak to the board? All right, seeing the hands and exhausting the signing sheet, I'll ask if there's any questions of the staff to follow up, any comments or questions to staff specifically in or to the board? And I'll just read the same in just a second. Do you have anything?
Maybe for Andrew.
Yeah, for Andrew, yes.
On, you made some mention that others were going to have to pick up the tax that would be lost. Does that mean just in Ken Lake, or is there a taxing district all the way around there? How does that work?
Yeah, it's for the tax code area, so that, the tax code area is made up of all the individual taxing entities that, you live in your house, every entity you pay taxes for, and every entity that your neighbors, if y'all pay the same, pay to the same groups, that's a tax code area, essentially. So if this parcel is not, if the Lakemore Community Club Board is not paying all the taxes on that parcel because it's in open space, then, yeah, the taxes that we collect the same amount as the county, it's collected from the other members of that tax code area. And so that's not unique for this specific application. That's for the open space tax program as a whole. That's how the state law is set up.
And maybe one other question for you, Andrew, on this, I've heard the term homeless and reestablished used a couple times. Has that been an ongoing problem in this particular parcel?
I'm probably not the best person to speak to their entire history. I do know at the time that they applied last year, there were encampments out there, or there was at least debris from encampments out there. It has since been cleaned up. The last time I was out on the property, I didn't observe anything. That's been a couple months. I'm not aware if there's been any additional reestablishment at this time.
If there had been crime or that type of activity on that particular parcel, would the sheriff or the City of Olympia, or both?
It would be the sheriff, yeah. So it's interesting, the Ken Lake or the Lakemore Community is within the City of Olympia. This parcel is in the urban growth area. So even though it's right next to the community, the parcel itself that we're talking about is technically unincorporated Thurston County.
Yeah, I have a couple of questions, but I would add to that. However, somebody calling 911 is going to show Olympia address, and so they both might be, have records of 911 calls. It would be nice to maybe pair those up. Lot of good comments tonight, taking copious notes, but two things that stood out, there was quite a few things, but two things that really stood out was, number one, somebody mentioned about public access needing to be looked at or researched, the definition of it. So not now, but at a later briefing, perhaps, could we get that information about local access? I'm sorry, about public access?
Sure, yeah. Public access, as, in the context of the open space tax program, there's three different categories. The application is going for the most restrictive category, which is partial access, which is essentially defined as, you've got one specific group of people that you identify that can use this parcel, and that's all that you're allowing. So in the private recreation area, it fits in with that. There's also what's known as substantial public access and then unlimited public access. So if it were a piece of land that was open to anyone who wanted to come anytime without restriction, that would be unlimited public access. So, yeah, all those three categories are within the confines of the open space tax program, and at some point in the future, we will bring forward to the board an opportunity to open up the whole program and look at how points are awarded, that public benefit rating system. It's at the discretion of the board how those points are awarded. And it's been, it's been a number of years since the board has had the opportunity to look at that.
Thank you. And I remember that from the briefing you did ahead of time, but it just stood out that someone had a question about that. Number two is, it was stated that Thurston County's legal, and we don't have any legal representation here tonight, but legal counsel suggested that Ken Lake's internal process should not or is not a consideration. I would just like, Mr. Stens, I believe it was, I would just like to have some follow-up to that, to that question from our legal counsel.
Yeah, sure. I can provide the materials that were provided to me by legal counsel. I can get those things to the board, so you all have that.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, another follow-on question from Commissioner Edwards.
Andrew, on this limited list of people that can participate out there, does that, is that like only property owners at Ken Lake and maybe their friends, their family? Who makes the selection and the determination if something's out of compliance? Is there a, I don't know, is there going to be a list, ID cards, entrance cards or something on this trail that keeps being talked about?
And again, that's all at the discretion of the applicants, how they choose to handle that. What I've heard from them is that that property would be open to residents of Ken Lake and their guests, and I've had, I've heard mentioned that, you know, people will have their ID cards, or that will be one of the rules that they establish.
Something was said about, somebody brought up ingress egress, I think, is what they were talking about. Is there other access to this property besides from within the confines of Ken Lake?
It's physically accessible from Kaiser Road, and it boards, so it's Kaiser 101, and the parcel's kind of here in the middle, so the community from the south can access it from within their community, but it is physically accessible from those other locations. There's no, you know, designated access at that point, but it's physically accessible.
One other one, I don't know where I'm going with this exactly, but for the public to know, this isn't a forum for me to debate or discuss with the public, and that's why I'm running this by you. If I needed to do so, is there any chance that, would you be the person that might set something up? Maybe a pro person and a con person, that I could go out there and take a walk around and just get a sense of what's going on? Is that a possibility?
I could look into whether that's a possibility.
I mean, I don't know if I'm even supposed to do that legally. I'd need to ask legal-
Yeah, let's get Elizabeth's take on that.
Yeah, we'll get Elizabeth's take on that.
But I see where you're going.
Okay.
Get another question.
I have no more questions. No, sir.
Anything else?
I don't know.
Martin or Andrew or Cindy, any follow, Andrew first, any follow on closing comments?
Not at this time.
Cindy, by chance? Martin?
Just to remind the board, as Andrew mentioned earlier, there is already scheduled on your agenda for next week, an opportunity for the staff to come back and do a follow-up briefing. They'll be taking time to go through these comments and then provide follow-up information to you on both the comments that were received, as well as some of the legal questions, or the questions that you've asked tonight. If there's anything else you want to add?
I thought, I did think of something I forgot to mention in my remarks. All the public comments that I've received, those 86 that I mentioned, the majority of them are on our website already, and I believe a link was provided to the board a week or so ago, and in front of each of you, and for Martin is a supplement. So the comments that I received from September 1 to today, which was the close of the written public comment period. So you have the whole set. I've got the whole set right here, so we're good to go on that.
And we have the new comments that were submitted in writing tonight that we'll make sure to add into your packet.
Okay, so we'll continue with the agenda, and the agenda brings this to the point of, for the board to make a decision of closing the public hearing. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move to adjourn the Lakemore Open Space Application Public Hearing of September 18, 2018.
Second.
We've moved to second to close and adjourn the public hearing. Although it favors, say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
And we are adjourned.[1782.91]